Can you hear me now? Okay. Let me get this meeting started. We have a quorum now, so welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is October 1st.
So I see that Mr. Herman has joined us and immediately upon coming into the room, yelled out while I was trying to read through the amending motion or the substitute motion, Mr. Herman, welcome. This is your first and only warning for this meeting.
Okay, and I'm looking at the names. Somebody very juvenile has basically, I'd say, half of these names are a very juvenile attempt to make a joke and get someone to say something. So, and there are not that many names, so I'm not going to call any names. I'm going to say if you're here and you've signed up, and I see our first speaker is someone who we know puts a lot of juvenile names on here, probably about half of these names. But if you're here to speak, just line up at your leisure over by the sergeants and we will call you. And you can come up, you don't, if you see there's a long line, you can wait till the line dies down a little bit. But a lot of folks have signed up with their names or at least a decent representation name, and then we have a lot of juvenile activity as well. So go ahead with, before we start with the first speaker, Councilmember McCosker, what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak very briefly. I was going to do an announcement at the end of the council meeting, but with your indulgence, I want to do it right now, and I will explain why. Today, I rise to commemorate the fortieth anniversary of the National 911 System.
It will now move to public comment. Sir, which of your names that you signed up on would you like to use?
Stop the timer during this translation. You did not stop the timer on Friday, so I just want to remind you, stop the timer during translation.
Speaker, before you begin, I have an announcement to make. So, as you can see, we are at bare quorum today, and I've been told that we have a hard stop for this meeting. So while we cannot tell people that they can't speak, if you would like to, if you have friends or if you have other people here who would like to speak and you're willing to take less time than you usually would, then that would help us fit in more people into the limited amount of time that we have. Again, this is not an instruction that you have to do so, but you may want to consider it as a courtesy to the people who are here. So, go ahead. You have three minutes for the items and you have one minute.
Last Friday, nobody gave me any courtesy during the translation.
Speaker, I am still, I am still giving instructions. This is, do not interrupt. This is your only warning.
Okay, enough. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes for the items.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three.
Your time has started. Go ahead.
And then general public comment.
So you have received one warning. You may begin. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
(singing) I remember my childhood, I'm a young girl, 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 I'm a young
You don't understand a word the other guy says, singing a gibberish. I did the same thing. You cut me off. Why? Why, there, Mr. Asian City Attorney? Why? Because I'm a fucking white nigger, that's why. Right? How come I can't do it? Why can't I do it? You let them do it, I can't do it, right? Because I'm white. So there's your racial discrimination claim. Add that to your bar complaint, okay? So as you're going to know, next year, you're going to hear a lot of this. FBI, you're going to hear a lot of that. So I wish you a happy new year, Bob. Fuck Israel. God bless Iran. Get them Iran. Fuck those motherfucking killers.
My name is Susan Rocha. I live in CD 1.
Which items would you like to speak to?
To all of them.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items.
I'm hoping that for the first time, President Dawson will care about justice reform, because it doesn't, doesn't register with any other city council members. And I do appreciate Corcoran for the kindness that he's shown me when he's been here. I appreciate that. Divine Savior Catholic Church and the noisy sound system.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda. I'm going to ask you to stick to the agenda, or I'm going to move you to general.
Okay, take me to general then.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
So you falsely accused me, Divine Savior Catholic Church falsely accused me of a crime that never happened. I went to jury trial and fought Divine Savior priest Albert, who prosecuted me on the stand for the prosecution, and his lying church members. Well, 12 people found me not guilty. They believed me and not them, because it never happened. It was so bogus. Now, city attorney needs to stop fighting me over my factually innocent case, because not guilty is not good enough. I'm in appellate court for the fourth time with the Northeast City Prosecutor, Gabriel Taylor, who wants to keep fighting me over my factually innocent case, even though they know that they lied, and there was no evidence, no witnesses. But no, you would not do the morally right thing to do when you know that you screwed up, when you did the wrong thing. You need to do the right thing and correct it, because that's wrong. You know what? You have a priest who can go and understand, and that's good enough for you? Is that promising you a saving heaven?
Speaker, your time has expired. Speaker, we need to continue. Your time has expired.
General public comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Everybody wants to live longer. Women, men. Men live longer if they have, if they just go to their wives. Men live longer if they just go to their wives.
All right, now we'll begin public comment by telephone.
I will speak to item 35 and general public comment.
Okay, good morning. You have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
All right, item 35 is lighting up City Hall for domestic violence awareness. At least you're doing it a little early this time, unlike usual, where you just do it after, after it's already been approved, you know, or after, after you've already done it, you just fund it a little later. So it's a good time to note that 40% of cops beat up their wives, so you should be aware of that. And maybe you should do something to actually protect victims of domestic violence. You know, usually when victims of domestic violence, you know, women get assaulted by someone, and they call the police, and the police come and arrest the victim of the domestic violence, because they're fucking sexist like that, and they're just, they, you know, I said, 40% of them beat up their wives, so, you know, yeah. And the other 60% support the other 40%, and we have.
General public comment.
So, yeah. Why are, you see, what, you're trying, Marquise, to cut it down to one meeting a week without any kind of vote or anything? Because I already knew about the recess on Friday, that that was supposed to advance, but why is tomorrow's meeting canceled? What's going on tomorrow? Why are you trying to rush through this meeting? So what, you're going to meet for two hours a week, and you can't hear from everyone because Tim McCosker has to scream into the microphone, because he doesn't understand, he doesn't need to shout into a thing that amplifies his voice? Why is Kevin suing Jason? Why are you suing Jason? You assaulted him. You were the aggressor. Kevin needs to resign. He's fucking racist. Marquise, you're no better than Paul. You've made no changes. When are we going to start seeing these meetings be more accessible? When are we, when are you going to let people speak on all items?
Caller, your time is, your time has expired.
Groot, how's it going? It's Rob Kwan. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
Good morning. You have one minute for general. Please begin.
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Grabner bringing up the issue of tomorrow's meeting, because this council is pulling us a fast one, and, and canceling meetings without actually doing it as a body. And Groot, I directed Charter Section 242 Conduct of Business. Well, the council shall hold regular meetings at least three days each week. By resolution, the council may establish periods during which the council or committees will be in recess. There's been no resolution regarding tomorrow's meeting. If you want to cancel it, cancel it, but you do it by resolution. It's not complicated. You do it for those $400 light-up City Hall motions. This is a bad look. And Katie, you're facing a recall. I'm trying to defend you. How's it going to look when people say council member Yurislawski is getting paid $1 million in her first term, and they don't even want to show up to their charter mandated.
Caller, your time has expired.
And they don't have the decency to cancel them in the appropriate way.